All right. We will call the City of Milton amended common council meeting to order Wednesday, April 3, 2024 at 6:03 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Linda Clark. There's a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Linda Clark. So, Elder Person Linda Clark. This is her last meeting. So, I'm going to give a lot of attention to Linda because she deserves all of the attention for her years and years and years of dedication and commitment to the City of Milton and the residents. She has been by far one of our most popular ever elder persons. And I'm just gonna try and make her cry for every agenda item. So, we can pause and pass Kleenexes. Do whatever we need to do. Linda has no Kleenexes, so she'll be using her sweater, but it's okay. All right, so, we have, which is lovely, we have a larger crowd tonight. We don't have anybody signed in to speak during public comments. But, we are very adaptable. And we understand that sometimes people think that maybe they won't speak, but later they decide to speak. So, if that is you and you are moved to speak, the sign-in sheet is up at the podium. And verbally, give us your first and last name and address. And then there's a pen in the sign-in sheet for you just to sign in. If that's something that you all decide to do. All right, so, we have mayoral proclamations for Labor Day and Alcohol Awareness Month. And I will sign those. I won't read those, only because I have a cold. Arbor Day. What did I say? Labor Day. Labor Day. Arbor Day. Linda will be back for Labor Day. So, I'll go to approval of the consent agenda.
Suck it.
There's a motion by Bill Wilson and a second by Linda Clark to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding sponsorship of baseball outfield signs.
So, the agreement attached tonight is to allow for leasing of outfield or for space on outfield fences. It outlines how the city will work with Milton Storm Baseball Organization, who reached out to try and help facilitate some fundraising for the baseball fields. This agreement has been reviewed and developed through several meetings with the Parks and Recs Commission. Any funds received through this agreement will be contributed to Parks Fund and used as deemed appropriate by the Parks and Recreation Commission for improvements to baseball and softball fields and their amenities that support those activities, which could include pavilions, restrooms, storage buildings, as well as the baseball diamonds. There's proposed lease amounts listed here. The documents are attached. Generally allows Milton Storm to lease on behalf of the city outfield fence space. There's a template sublease agreement that Milton Storm would use with the potential ACs. Staff recommends approving the leasing agreement with Milton Storm Baseball Organization.
Any questions or comments by the council?
And I should add, we do have a representative here, Jason from Milton Storm, if there are any questions for the Milton Storm.
I do have a question for Jason. I'm just wondering, what is the material of the signing going to be?
Jason, do you want to just walk up to the microphone? And I could add to that, too. Linda, the agreement does have some sign material and size specifications. So, I believe it's listed as nylon coroplast is the type of material.
Yeah, cut vinyl or coroplasty board, minimum half-inch thick grommets. So, it's all working with markets, kind of the size that they recommended. So, we've been going back and forth.
And who is going to be responsible for the maintenance of the signs in the event that you're, well, because there's going to be so many of them all around the city, which is great.
We will facilitate or coordinate with the Milton Storm. Milton Storm will reach an agreement with the advertisers and then they're going to acquire the signs. And then they'll provide the signs to us and then either Milton Storm or Public Works staff will assemble the signs or install the signs in the spring and take them down in the fall.
Anything else from anyone?
I would move approval of the lease agreement with the Storm.
Second.
What? There's a motion and a second. Some people are taking Linda off the hook tonight regarding sponsorship of baseball outfield signs. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right, discussion and possible action on ATV/UTV routes.
On March 25th, last week Monday, the city hosted an ATV workshop. And staff seeks additional guidance from the council on next steps. We had a very good workshop set up last Monday. We had about 25 to 30 attendees. Had representatives from the Rock County Sheriff's Office, Rock County Public Works, City of Jefferson Police, and then three city staff members here to answer questions. Thought it was a very good workshop. Hope everyone got a chance to view it. Thank you for the council members that did come to that workshop. And again, we're just looking for how to proceed with next steps.
So, if I'm understanding the memo correctly, you're asking council if they are interested in having staff develop an ATV/UTV route ordinance? Would that be part of it?
That is correct.
You know, one thing that I found very interesting brought up during the presentation was something that the Chief of Police from Jefferson brought up, which included a sunset clause, which allowed a six-month trial period that was designed to try out the use of ATVs during, in the city, once all of the guidelines and I don't want to call them laws, but all of the guidelines were set up. The speed that people had to follow, which streets they could use, everything that was designed to provide guidelines for everyone. And then after six months, that group would sit down again and decide what worked, what didn't work. I particularly found it interesting that during that time, he said there were 2,031 calls and only four of them involved ATVs.
I thought that that was an excellent presentation. And thank you, Paul, for doing that. And I hope that for everybody that's here on this particular item, that if you do have any more questions, that you will ask. One of the things that I appreciated was the timeframe to be off of the roads at the end of the day. I just feel like, especially if we do a sunset period to try this out, I think that that's something that we need to also look at. The other thing that I noticed from the other municipalities and organizations that I liked is the restriction of kids under 16. It, maybe it's, you know, that's just my own personal opinion, but I just wanted to add those comments.
Were there other municipalities that they gave examples of? I can't remember that had sunset? Or is that?
Several municipalities throughout the state did kind of a trial period to see how it works. If it doesn't work, they'll get rid of it. We have the opportunity to get rid of it. If not, you know, then we'll continue and of course, you can modify any ordinance at any time.
I guess the only question that I've got in terms of the sunset, and I wasn't able to be at the meeting, but I did watch the YouTube of it. And the police chief from Jefferson struck me as being answering a lot of questions, even sometimes before they were asked. So, that was very good. The question I've got, though, on sunsetting it is whether six months is enough or, you know, whether we should make it a year. The concern that I have is, you know, we've got an organization that says they're going to pay for signs and put signs up and stuff. That's a big expense for them for a six-month period of time. With, you know, no guarantee of what happens at the other end of it. So, I think that's a consideration, anyway. Thank you.
Is there any comments? Does anybody want to say anything that's here tonight? First and last name, address, and then sign in, please. Thank you.
James Brick, 5868 North Goodyear Drive, Milton. I am the president of the Rock County Crawler ATV Club, and we are the ones that are paying for the signs. If you guys wish to do that sunset clause, I agree, a year would probably be a better timeframe, just in case it doesn't, you know, we, a lot of money we got to pay. So, I get that point. And if you have any other questions, please let me know. Hopefully, I can answer them with you. And we work forward getting these routes open. Thank you.
Do we know of any of the other communities that have started with the sunset clause? If they've put the signs up and then decided not to move forward with it?
In my research, I have not found that to happen. It appears that most people follow the law, follow the guidelines that are set by the council. Of course, you're going to get one or two bad apples. That happens with just about anything. But usually, and my personal experience is ATV riders regulate themselves, much like snowmobile riders do in the winter. You know, they want these trails open, they want these routes open, and they will, you know, make sure that things are above board and following the rules.
I guess, Paul, I'm curious, what would be the difference? So, we have the sunset clause, or we just pass an ordinance without a failure option? We could still get rid of it and change it later, right? What is the, what would be the big difference between those two?
We could get rid of it. This requires us to address it again.
I think it's a matter of public acceptance. You know, that that's the reason for the sunset clause is, is if people say, well, if it's really a problem, you know, they've already thought about doing something about it. You know, I agree. I mean, you're absolutely right. That's the case. But I think that the practice seems to be, everybody thinks there's going to be all kinds of problems and then they don't exist, or they're really, really minimal. The one that I did want to address, and it's already been brought up, and that's times of day. I think Jefferson said something, I don't remember what the morning hour was, whether it was 6 o'clock, something like that.
I thought it, I thought it was 10 to 10?
Was it 10 to 10? I know it was 10 that, I know it was 10 at the other end.
I believe it was 5 AM to 10 PM.
Okay.
And the surrounding municipalities that assigned ordinances, that's what they've gone with.
Okay. I think the 10 speaks to one of the issues very effectively. And, you know, that's the only real problem is with driving anything, is you start to mix alcohol with it. And the 10 o'clock says, we're not putting it down at 2 AM for bar time or something like that. The 10 AM, I think, speaks to that well. And so, I'd like to see that time period and being consistent with other municipalities makes sense on that one.
Linda?
I would like to make a motion to direct city administration to proceed with the development of an ATV/UTV route ordinance that would include a one-year sunset hours of 5 AM to 10 PM and all streets in the City of Milton.
I'll second.
Would you like to include no riders under 16?
Yes, and that also.
And I'll second that amendment.
Can I consider amending it?
Sure.
Okay. I still think you need to at least discuss it or evaluate it at six months to determine if it needs any amending. You know, evaluate, is it working in the plan that you have? Or does it need looking at anything and then going back to the second six months?
So, would you want it to sunset in six months or just have it on the calendar for a review and then sunset at 12 months?
Have it on the calendar to review.
Okay. Is that an amendment, then?
Yes.
I'll second the amendment.
Is that okay with you, Linda?
Yes. Amendment, addition, okay.
Do we need anything else?
No, I'm not interpreting the amendment any way as being a part of the ordinance. You're just wanting to have staff schedule it for a review after six months, but it's not a part of the ordinance.
Okay, gotcha.
Because, as indicated, if there's an issue, the council can at any time choose to, in two months, revoke, repeal the ordinance. So, I don't think that's necessary, right? I think that was your intent, just to have staff calendar it. Okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and so, are we thinking in 30 or 60 days? Just to give folks an idea. Okay, so, 30 days or earlier, so just watch our postings for our meetings if you want to come back and join us for another meeting. Okay, great. Discussion and possible action on an extension for Red Hawk Flats on their development agreement.
We originally amended the Red Hawk Flat Development Agreements back in January. There were some miscommunications between the developer and myself on that. And so, I apologize to the council on that. And I'm going to bring forth the agreement again, the amendment for the agreement again. In this case, they're just a little concerned they're not going to have the apartment complexes fully complete by December 31, 2024. And so, they'd like to extend that to 2025 for the full completion. However, they are expect, would like to have the payment timeline remain, so they would receive their first payment within August 1, 2025. They've already started construction. Foundation has been poured on the facility, on the two buildings. I don't expect this to really alter much. I think they're just trying to make sure that they are not in breach, in case something does happen.
Well, what if nothing does happen?
And then everything comes together as planned and everything's great?
No, like, what if they just stopped in the middle of construction? Like, they go bankrupt, whatever. What, what's safe? What is already kind of in the developer's agreement that protects the taxpayers if that happens?
Paul and I have discussed that in determining whether or not to agree to the changes that the developer requested. And in the existing development agreement, it already provides that the amount of each annual installment payment will not exceed the amount of the tax incremental revenue generated for the prior year in doing the installment period. So, if they generate $10 in revenue, that's all they're going to get.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. Any other questions or comments from Linda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended developers' agreement with Red Hawk Flats.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2024-529, annexation petition for Park Place Investments from the Town of Milton.
Chris Roach, Ordinar Park Place Investment, has submitted an annexation petition for his land consisting of 21 acres to be annexed to the City of Milton from the Town of Milton. The annexation petition was a direct annexation by unanimous approval. It has been reviewed by the state and given the go-ahead for the city to annex that land if the state would like so, like to. Upon annexation, the parcel will be zoned R4, Residential District 4, and used for future one-to-family home developments. After annexation is effective, the property shall be exempt from further taxation by the Town of Milton and henceforth be subject to taxation and assessments as part of the City of Milton. The City of Milton agrees to pay annually to the Town of Milton for five years, the amount equal to the amount of property tax levied by the Town of Milton on the annexed territory, as shown by the tax roll in the year the annexation is final, that would be this year's tax roll. And that total will result in $35,044.25 being paid from the City of Milton to the Town of Milton for the parcel for the entire five-year period. The Town of Milton has filed no objections to this annexation. Our tax rate is higher than the township of Milton, so we'd be bringing in more than those funds if it just sat as an empty field. However, the developer does plan on developing the property. And City of Milton Administration recommends common council approve ordinance 2024-529, which would annex this land into the City of Milton.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. This is a very large parcel that we're talking about, Paul. How is this annexation work with the park funds?
This annexation would have no effect on the park funds. Any further development agreement, however, if they do choose to develop the parcel, would include those, either creating parkland or providing funds as our ordinance states.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that this I'll make a motion that this city, that we approve ordinance 2024-529, annexing the land into the city of Milton.
Question, Linda, is your, is your motion to approve the first reading, waive the second and third and adopt? Is that your motion?
Yes.
I thought so, okay.
Thank you.
Did you last time spark?
Second.
Gone and I was ready for that.
Linda, that was my fault for not putting it on the memo.
That's right, Paul. That's right.
For old time's sake.
For old time's sake. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2024-530, amending the Historic Preservation Commission membership.
So the Historic Preservation Commission has asked the question about the student representative and the Milton House Museum Executive Director. They attend all the meetings, but they are not able to vote. They had requested that the ordinance be changed to allow them voting rights. While reviewing it, we did update the information where it had the initial creation of the Historic Preservation Commission, where it had varying years for each member. That in the proposed ordinance, the term for each member is three years with the exception of the Milton House Museum nominee. So that could be the executive director or anyone else that the Milton House would like to designate. And then the student representative would also be an annual appointment. The student representative would stay, would need to be in the school district of Milton.
One other, couple of things maybe mentioned too. Part of this is done to help with trying to get a quorum to meetings and stuff, but also the fact that you could end up with a bunch of people, me, a bunch of people in a room and still not have a quorum based off the way it was before. So it's an attempt to try to give everybody a chance to vote. And since they're coming to those meetings, why not give them a chance to actually have a say in that? And then I would also say there that we did discuss back and forth whether the city, the Milton House director's nominee or the Milton House director, if they need to be inside the school district, we decided it was better if they're not. Because some, two of the previous directors have been in Janesville, so wouldn't have qualified in the first place. I just want to mention that as a topic of discussion that we decided not to go down that path. Unlike the rest of the positions, pretty much have to be within the city or be, have some type of experience that qualifies.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions or comments?
I think it's just great that you're putting our youth on that committee. Uh huh, to vote. They, they should be able to vote. They go through this in their schools, in all the schools, so I think it's great. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 530, to approve the first reading, waive the second and third and adopt.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, good job, you guys. Discussion and possible action regarding agreement for the hauling of biosolids. Sorry. I crossed number 13 off already. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution 2024-03, establishing fee for short-term rental licenses.
At our last meeting, council passed ordinance 2024-528, short-term rentals. The ordinance requires council to set a fee. $25 per year license fee will offset the cost of staff time issuing the licenses. We'd recommend you approve resolution number 2024-3, establishing a fee for short-term rental licenses, which will set the short-term rental license at $25.
I think that's a reasonable fee to have in there to help compensate, but also doesn't really cause any financial strain in any way.
Do we do anything extra with the fire department and police as far as notification when we, with these short-term rentals? Or is that something that the, the property owner does?
The health department, the health department does do inspections as part of the state licensing. As far as fire and police, we would be able to provide them those licenses, but they have no role in inspection or anything of that matter.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-03, establishing fee for short-term rental license.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Back to hauling of biosolids.
So this is the agreement with BiTech. At the March 5th meeting, council approved the proposal from BiTech for the work. It's a five-year contract. The dollar amounts are listed there with some estimated annual totals. The agreement has been reviewed by attorney Schrader. Staff recommends approving the agreement with BiTech Resource Management for biosolids hauling and land application.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right. You can do, you can do anything. You guys are finally learning all the shortcuts? We can skip the whole training. I don't know. Discussion. Discussion and possible action regarding change order number three for the 2023 street and utility infrastructure project.
So this is for the Madison Avenue and the Elm Street lift station project. It had two, two parts. The Madison Avenue part was generally completed last year outside of some miscellaneous punchless type works that'll be completed in the spring. The lift station was delayed due to some electrical components that were unable to be obtained in time to complete the project. This change order provides for an extension of time as well as additional payment for some of the required electrical components and installation of one additional water valve. The total impact to the budget is $18,491.72. The majority of that expense will be funded by the wastewater and water utility for their components. City administration recommends approving the 2023 utility infrastructure change order number three.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to approve the 2023 utility infrastructure change order number three.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on approving hiring a forestry intern.
As clerk Salvold noted last week, city of Milton, our last meeting, city of Milton did receive an urban forestry grant from Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. One of the projects listed in that grant is development of a urban tree inventory. The grant is a 50% match. The Parks and Recreation Commission considered alternatives to complete the inventory. That included a request for proposals process for hiring an intern. The commission ultimately recommended hiring an intern to complete the work. The attached job description was developed for the position and requires approval of the council. The fiscal impact, we're estimating approximately 480 hours of work at a posted wage of $18 to $20 per hour. And the forestry grant would cover approximately, or would cover half of that. City administration recommends hiring a forestry intern as defined in the attached job description.
And then would you like advertise at different colleges for this or what is the plan?
Yeah, we would use our normal channels that we advertise, but then I would also like to reach out to colleges with forestry or related courses of study to try to, try to broaden the pool.
I'll make a motion to recommend hiring a forestry intern as defined in the attached job description given to us on this date.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding an application to the agricultural roads improvement program. Sounds exciting.
This is a grant that, that came out earlier this year. The eligibility criteria are listed here. Milton has a street that is in need of some construction work within the next few years possibly. It's Vincent Street. There's producers listed along the, or producers along the route. It's currently designated as a Class B highway by city ordinance. And it's classified as a local road. The grant application estimates the total project cost for the eligible portion of the project to be just north of $1,100,000. Era funding is limited to 90% of the project cost, so the grant award could be as high as $1,026,000. That will ultimately be decided as part of the award, whether they would award the 90% or not. The project would, reimbursements would require that the project is completed and reimbursement sent in no later than June 1st of 2028. So construction would likely be in 2026 or 2027. If the, if the grant is awarded, we will be presented with a state municipal agreement from WISDOT similar to our state transportation program grant we had received for High Street. The total project cost would likely be higher than the $1,140,000 due to the non-participating costs for water and utility, or water and sewer utility work that would take place. But again, if the grant's available, I think we should try to go after that. City administration recommends submitting the application for the agricultural road improvement program for Vincent Street.
I make a motion to recommend submitting the application for the agricultural road improvement program for Vincent Street.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution 2024-04, recognizing and honoring older person Linda Clark. Jenny, can you read it for me? Thank you. I can.
Okay. Whereas, older person Linda Clark has dutifully served the residents of the city of Milton as older person during various terms spanning from 2003 to 2024. And whereas, older person Linda Clark played a crucial role in the formation of the newly expanded Fire and EMS district encompassing 220 square miles and serving 25,000 people across Rock, Dane and Jefferson counties, ensuring access to emergency services for all community members. And whereas, older person Linda Clark's dedication contributed significantly to the city of Milton's continuous designation as a tree city by the Arbor Day Foundation since 2016, demonstrating the city's commitment to urban forestry and environmental stewardship. And whereas, older person Linda Clark has been instrumental in advancing recreational facilities evidenced by her support for improvements at Lamar Park's Playground, integration between the city of Milton and the Ice Age Trail, as well as in the preservation and development of prairies within Cross Ridge Park and Bendalinn Prairie at Tower Hill Park, thereby enriching the natural landscape and fostering biodiversity within our community. And whereas, older person Linda Clark's leadership was crucial in establishing several tax incremental financing districts, fostering over $113 million in equalized growth within the city of Milton. And whereas, older person Linda Clark played a pivotal role in staffing changes, including the hiring of key personnel such as the city engineer, public works director, police chief, city administrator, city treasurer and city clerk. And whereas, older person Linda Clark has served diligently on various commissions and committees, including Plan Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, the Library Board, Tourism Development Committee and the Joint Fire Commission. And now therefore be resolved by the city of Milton Common Council on behalf of the entire Milton community, hereby acknowledges and honors Linda Clark for her dedicated public service as older person. The council commends her unwavering commitment to community betterment and extends heartfelt gratitude for her active involvement in numerous civic endeavors. Council wishes Linda Clark continued success in all her future endeavors.
I know this is really controversial and we might want to debate it for hours, but is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And I'll take comments now.
Put a lot of good time in.
From now on, we will informally refer to the general items portion of the agenda as the Linda Clark General Items.
Absolutely, we will. But I just want to say it has been a pleasure working with you. You are one of the longest-serving older persons in the city of Milton and they have continually supported you and re-elected you time after time. You are one of the most hardworking, you're knocking on doors whether you're getting re-elected or not and seeking input from not only your neighborhood, but everybody else's neighborhood and all the residents in the city of Milton. And the, the list was extensive, but not all encompassing. And the impact that you have had on the city will always be remembered. And now you can attend any meeting whenever you want to and it will never be an issue about it being a quorum. You understand how to make public comments and break rules on public comments and general items and do your own thing and not follow directions, so. You are, you are someone that is a wonderful role model to young girls and young ladies. And you made it cool to be a woman on city council long before it was cool to be a woman on city council, so. Thank you.
Add to that, not just a role model to young women and stuff like that, but also to people in general because she helped me learn how to do this role. And also she's part of the reason that I'm even on council, so.
I just, I'm, I'm humbled and I'm not going to cry anymore. I just thank you and I just, it has been a pleasure doing all of these things and working with all of the people that I have. But this is a wonderful city. Thank you.
It is. Because of you. Hey, you're, you're just going to be the first person submitting an application for every open spot on the committee so you can just serve on all the committees and not have to go to council meetings. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Oh, are you, oh, there's, did we vote on that motion? There's a motion and a second. And you voted? We did not vote. Oh, does that mean she has to stay on council? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Therefore be it resolved. Okay, um, the next portion is the Linda Clark General Items. Linda? Okay, well, I, we're going to come back to you, so you better have some by the time we get done with these. Anybody else?
Historic Preservation, you kind of tonight saw one of the things we worked on, but I do want to thank Jenny for putting a lot of time and effort into being able to get us across the finish line on getting that taken care of. Because Jenny's put a lot of hard work in getting us to be able to get, working on the ordinance, but also getting enough people together to be able to pass that in the historic preservation and stuff like that. So I wanted to compliment Jenny on that because she did put a lot of hard work into it.
Thank you. Any other general items?
I just have a general item in terms of complimenting staff here at city hall. Ethel and I came in to vote because I was going to be otherwise involved in something else on election day. And, you know, Ashley makes you feel just so much at home. And, you know, not, not the normal experience of a civic kind of an office. Great job.
Thank you, Bill. Any other general items? Well, I just want to congratulate our winners, and I know that Ken is not here tonight, and, you know, he'll never do the general items, the diligence that Linda did, but he can try. And I just want to say, you know, I think we have, we have a really good council. We really do, and we don't always get along, and we don't always have to get along, and that, we're not elected to get along and agree on everything, but we are elected to do our very best to be a functioning council and be informed and make thoughtful decisions, and I think, I think we do a really good job of that. And, you know, this last year will be an honor to, to be your mayor. And I look forward to the next few months, and Linda, please come visit us often, often, please come visit up. And we'll do staff reports. Jenny, do you want to go first?
Yes, I do, because I'd like to start by saying we have some committees and commissions available, if anyone's interested. So Police Commission, Border Review, Zoning Board of Appeals. Sorry, but yes, we do, we, we have a few that have some vacancies on it. And then, we had an election last night, everything went pretty darn well, and I, I want to echo what Bill said, our staff helped out with setting up, taking down, and that was just fabulous, and our election officials, I can't say enough about them, and it really, it means something because we had multiple people coming in that were there for voting, and they said, how do I become an election official? So that was pretty amazing, that we have that many people that already we have, really, we have a full list, and more people want to be involved, so that was very exciting. But that is all that I have for this evening.
Can I turn it for a second on? So I brought my son in yesterday when I came to vote, and as I was walking through, it was late at night towards the end, and it was really neat to, as I was going through the process, they were, the election officials were actually explaining to my son the whole things of what I need to fill out and stuff like that, doing in more detail, explaining the different stuff in the paperwork, so he could kind of learn, and I thought that was really well handled and really well done, because it was above, but above and beyond what was necessary, and I thought that was great.
Thank you. I have not heard, and I don't, I'd like, over the years, I don't know that I've ever, we've ever had complaints about our election process, and that's something that the City of Milton for decades can take pride in it, and our volunteers, and that, I think that speaks highly of who we have for volunteers and who we have for staff. So that's awesome. Mark, can you stop the weather? I mean, can you? I just can't even.
No. We did receive the signs that were approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission for the disc golf course. I, I think they're pretty neat, they've got the QR code you can scan, so just, even if you don't play disc golf, maybe stop by and check it out, because it's pretty neat. The local disc golf group participated and put in quite a bit of time and effort to help develop those, so that's a pretty neat thing that we have.
Nice.
I'm gonna add a little bit more, that's okay. So there are some videos on our City of Milton YouTube channel that go with those signs, so as soon as those signs are up, those YouTube videos are already output, it actually shows you as you were going, if you were throwing your disc where, well, where it should go. So they, the, the same group that designed the signs designed those videos, so I encourage you to check them out.
So we could, in theory, have a team building disc golf game. Like, we could do that theoretically, Mark, right?
You want to figure out how to notice it?
Well, yeah, it'll just be like, hey, we're gonna have our council meeting at the park. Okay. A quorum may be present for team. Ashley? I'm sure the library and the Ice Age Trail would love that too, I don't know, we can figure it out.
Yeah, if you want to play disc golf, we do have disc golf kits you can check out, so you don't have to buy them.
See how that works? See how that works?
We should probably get those out pretty soon. Well, speaking of summer, we're planning our summer programs right now, we're always working about three to four months ahead with our programs. We are also planning a monarch festival that's gonna be on Saturday, September seventh, to highlight pollinators and the importance of protecting our pollinators. We are gonna have an original play, and that's gonna be written by a local playwright, and an art walk featuring wings decorated by eighteen local artists, kind of similar to what Rotary Gardens does. So those will be along our pathway, so we're kind of really developing that, we're very excited about it, and the weather's gonna be absolutely perfect that day. Our first food truck rally is gonna be Sunday, May fifth, so that's coming up really quickly from eleven to three. We have nine books, nine trucks booked for that one. And I wanted to share that we have a new study room, meeting room reservation software, so I can keep track of how often our rooms are being used, and they were used a hundred and twenty-one times just in the month of March. So that's with library programs, people using them for studying, meetings, organizations. So that's just one of the many reasons why people come to the library, is to use those rooms, besides the ninety to a hundred people that come for Jamie's stories time at one time. So, and then the next Milton Youth Coalition meeting is gonna be next Tuesday, April eighth, or April ninth, at five thirty here at City Hall. Everyone is welcome to attend, there will be a dinner provided, and we will have a presentation by U W extension about their services and partnerships that they provide, and we will continue to work on our alcohol logic model.
Okay, so I have a question. Is the software just internal software, or do you use it to reserve the rooms online?
Yes, the public can use it to reserve our rooms online.
Yep. Okay, and I just want to, like, shamelessly plug the library, because I started to learn another language, Spanish, not that I can remember my French, but I'm learning Spanish for reasons that you probably already know. And I love that program that the library has, it is just a phenomenal program. I can do it like thirty minutes a day, and I, I just, I was so excited, so, you know how old I am, so if I can use that like anybody can, it, it's really a great program, so cheers to the library for that.
Yeah, and along with that, so it's called transparent languages, you can learn any language, we also have a Spanish conversation group that meets the second Thursday of each month. Ashley at the library speaks fluent Spanish, so her and Angie have the Spanish conversation group, and we have all levels of Spanish speakers at this group, and we also have a French community group as well, if you want to practice your French.
And I can ask where the bathroom is and where the bank is. And how to order unbotai dagua, a bottle of water, perfumé, you know, things like that. I'm learning just one, one or two letters or words at a time. Paul?
I've been working on our strategic plan, I've reached out to the high school to get students for our sport groups, I reached out to council here to get some ideas for citizens, I appreciate all the feedback that you guys sent me, I've got a really good core list there, and if you think of more people that you'd like to send in my way. And I've also talked to senior staff, leadership team, to start getting folks from staff set up for that. Also on that, in the last two weeks, been approached by two local businesses looking to expand, both kind of major expansions. One I've been actually working on since I started here, and things are coming to fruition, and should be seeing something there pretty soon.
Excellent.
It's good to know that our local businesses are expanding as well as bringing in businesses from the outside, so to be able to help out, make sure they know that the city's here for the businesses that are here right now, and not just the ones that are coming in.
That is awesome, alright. Okay, I'm not gonna make the team building exercise about Linda. What is your favorite Linda moment? Okay, that's not it, that's not it, but it's a bonus if you answer the team building question and throw in a favorite Linda moment. Okay, so here's the team building exercise that I was thinking about a lot on my three and a half hour drive today in snow showers. If you could live anywhere else other than the state of Wisconsin in the month of April, where would it be? I mean, if you were so inclined to not live during spring snowstorms every other day.
I think everyone knows mine but Florida. I have, my family lives down there, most of my family, and, yeah, they're at the pool today, so, I would rather be there right now.
I would love to be in the Swiss, Swiss Alps during the spring.
I would go somewhat similar to that Maine. Mountainous as well, so, favorite Linda moment though, probably while watching Linda handle the lunches for our school day, we had tons and tons of schools coming, and more than just homeschoolers, so.
I'll, I'll go with Asheville, North Carolina.
I think Florida, if, can we do the same thing? Otherwise, then I'd say Hawaii, just somewhere warmer than here is the gist of it.
And there's too many favorite Linda moments to say just one.
I'm gonna say, if I could be anywhere, I would have to say Missouri, other than Wisconsin, because I'm not into the Florida thing. So, of course, Arizona would always be a good place.
I think I'd be in Turks and Caicos. That's where I'd be. Or Saint, or Saint John. Or Australia, like basically anywhere where it's seventy-five degrees or warmer than.
Australia is my second pick.
If I had to leave, I'm not a big fan of leaving Milton, Key West, I do like to travel to Key West.
I'm gonna say Arizona. It's hot, it's dry right now, they're at the pool. And all my Linda moments are my favorite.
To do, okay, I have a lot of Linda moments, but, and I hope she keeps doing this, my favorite Linda moments are always when she texts me like, hey, are you going to so-and-so? And I always say, yeah, I'm like, I'm ready to go right now, and actually, I probably fifty percent of the time forgot, and I'm like, thank God for Linda. I do need you to help me with my calendar ongoing.
There is that, if you go to a community event and Linda's not there.
Yeah.
You start worrying about, is Linda sick?
There was a time period when I was like, has anyone heard from Linda? That we were a little bit worried, but we found you. We always find you, so that's good.
Remember the council meeting, she thought it was at seven? Right, it was, like, you thought it was an hour later than it was.
In her defense, though, the council meetings used to be at seven.
Okay, that's, that's.
That changed a number of years ago.
I don't know how many years we've been meeting at six before she figured it out, but.
My first few years, I think it was seven, left that.
Or a good day, you know, having a relaxing dinner at home.
Probably Florida, just somewhere warmer.
I was like, oh, Mark is gonna be like Disney World.
Well, anywhere, how about the south of France?
Oh, yeah, for sure. He's so classy. You know, he's got the law degree, he's so classy. Have you heard about the Florida man?
Yes, yes I have. Oh wait, did you say that in the microphone?
Australia.
Alright, I think that's all except for. Florida? Oh, we can do, like, why can't we do council meetings in Florida by Zoom?
If we want to support Milton, we can be snowbirds, there is a Milton, Florida, so.
Oh, yeah, let's see if they want to like, you know, like, you switch houses.
I've, I've been to Milton, Florida.
Do a, like, a real life, bring the Florida council up here for a month, we go down there and run their city.
Milton, Florida is too close to Pensacola, there are better parts of Florida than.
But if we can make a lot of money for our respective cities, right? Mark's like. That's right, and, and things in a million years I never would have thought of to ask. So keep the questions coming. Our next meeting is April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I will see you then, and maybe we'll have a little visitor with us that day, we might have a little visitor. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We're adjourned, thank you again, Linda. Seven oh four.